Good evening. We'll call it seven o'clock. We'll call this meeting to order. All the selectmen of present will start by transmitting of Treasury Warrants Twenty-Eight, Twenty-Eight A., not Twenty-Nine, Twenty-Nine A., Thirty and Thirty A.
Motion so moved.
Second.
Motion made second. All in favor? unanimous. Thank you. We have no meeting minutes to approve, so we'll go right to our seven o'clock appointment. Mr. Michael A. Kyber, the town manager, for his presentation of the Town Manager's Fiscal Year 2013 Budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chairman Semaglia, members of the Board of Selectmen, Chairman John Dougherty, and members of the Finance Committee. It is a privilege to stand before you to present what I fully expect will be my last annual budget message. Although the substance, format, and design of the budgets have varied over the past twenty-two years, the fundamental framework by which each budget has been conceived and crafted has remained anchored to the principle of collaboration. I have been fortunate that Boards of Selectmen, Finance Committees, school committees, school superintendents, department heads and staff have embraced the notion that we are in this together. In Wilmington, we have fostered an environment of respect for each agency's mission, enabling the town to better allocate its limited resources among its many and worthy competing needs. At the recently concluded Annual Conference of the Massachusetts Municipal Association, House Ways and Means Chairman Brian Dempsey said that "The challenge in crafting a budget lies in meeting expectations." The fiscal year 2013 budget proposal has been formulated to deliver a product that meets the reasonable expectations of a community whose residents are entitled to an affordable, efficient, creative, and responsible local government. The town's policy of conservative budgeting, its cautious approach to revenue forecasting, and its reluctance to spend all that we have has served the community well during what has been an extended period of economic difficulty. The town's financial condition is strong, placing local government in a position to meet not only the everyday operational needs of a vibrant community, but to invest in important long-term capital improvements. The goal of this year's financial plan is twofold. First, it is to continue to improve and expand upon the delivery of services and programs by carefully allocating funds in an efficient and resourceful way. And second, it is to maintain the town's commitment to funding important capital projects. There are a number of positive local economic indicators that position the town to meet its objectives. The town's long-term municipal bond rating was reconfirmed at AA+. The town retired its long-term debt in 2011, and then issued $4.54 million in new debt at an interest rate of just 2.76 percent. The town has not made an appropriation from free cash since fiscal year 2008. The most recent certification of available funds in the town's general fund was calculated to be just under $9.5 million, the highest in its history, representing an increase of over $2.8 million from last year's Department of Revenue certification. The town adopted a fiscal year 2012 budget that is based upon receiving approximately $700,000 less than the actual local aid that was received. Further, we are seeing a $143,000 increase in new growth over what had been anticipated for fiscal year 2012, and we will have the benefit of at least $200,000 in first-time revenue as a result of the town's adoption of a local meals tax. In the current fiscal year, revenue from ambulance services and from the Medicare Retiree Drug Subsidy Program will generate more than $500,000 over initially anticipated local receipts. As a result, the town's revenue estimates for fiscal year 2012 are greater than anticipated and will enable the town to meet any unanticipated expenses incurred or to be incurred during the current fiscal year, including costs for employee health insurance, heating fuel and gasoline, public safety overtime, and the police incentive program. It remains critical for the town to maintain substantial financial reserves in order to meet future obligations, particularly those that pertain to operational and maintenance costs related to new or renovated school and municipal buildings, advances in technology, building improvements, capital equipment and infrastructure, and for the acquisition of fields and open space. Reiterating its commitment to using free cash for extraordinary one-time purchases only, the Board of Selectmen has endorsed the use of this revenue source as a means to expand the town's inventory of recreational and field space. On January 9th, 2012, Selectmen voted unanimously to enter into a contingent purchase and sale agreement to acquire over 20 acres of land on Cross Street, commonly referred to as Gentile Farm. This land purchase will enable the eventual development of a diversified outdoor recreational complex, helping to meet the town's longstanding commitment to address the growing demand for new and improved field space. Voters attending the 2012 Annual Town Meeting will be asked to authorize the expenditure of free cash in the amount of $1,182,500 to purchase the Gentile Farm property. This proposal exemplifies the reason why it makes sense to build the town's reserve in order to take advantage of opportunities benefiting the community without the need to borrow or to ask for burdensome property tax override. The town anticipates that available revenue in fiscal year 2013 will increase approximately 5.2 percent over estimated revenues for fiscal year 2012. The town's revenue projection of $86,362,000 is in balance with the fiscal year 2013 budget proposal, which represents an increase of 8.1 percent or nearly $6.5 million over current year expenditure levels. Nearly $3.2 million of that increase is directly attributed to the initial debt payment that is being funded through an increase in the town's property tax levy to pay for the design and construction of the new Wilmington High School. The amount of debt payments attributable to the high school project will be added to the net levy limit over the life of the bond. This debt will decline each year until the loan is extinguished. We expect to issue debt in the very near future in order to take full advantage of the favorable bond market. As outlined at previous meetings, the town estimates that based on a 25-year bond issuance, the average annual cost to the homeowner that is attributable to the borrowing will be approximately $164. Based on current economic indicators and the town's strong financial condition, we are confident in the accuracy of our projections. The town will budget local aid in fiscal year 2013 consistent with the initial release of Department of Revenue estimates. Although the governor is calling for a $145 million increase in Chapter 70 Education Aid, it is unlikely that Wilmington will be the beneficiary of any of these funds. The funds will more likely be earmarked for economically disadvantaged urban areas and for those school districts having difficulty in maintaining their foundation budget level for school spending. Chapter 70 funding, therefore, is level funded at The main municipal aid account, unrestricted general government aid, is being budgeted at the original fiscal year 2012 allotment. That amount, $1,951,000, does not include the $152,000 that was distributed to the town last October as its share of the $65 million supplementary local aid distribution. Although the governor's budget bill includes language that would distribute any year-end fiscal year 2012 surplus to local communities, without a guarantee of a surplus, it would be inconsistent with the town's budgeting philosophy to rely on such a speculative source of funding. The budget proposes the use of three additional sources of revenue to ensure that the town's capital outlay needs are appropriately addressed in fiscal year 2013. Although these funds have not been relied upon in recent years, they are available for appropriation. The budget plan recommends the use of $600,000 in overlay surplus, $90,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund, and the transfer of $59,407 from the Capital Project Closeout Account, which represents funds appropriated but not expended for the purchase of the fire department's aerial tower truck. Adoption of the proposed fiscal year 2013 budget will enable the town to meet contractual obligations, maintain service delivery, continue to offer a variety of programs, and to officially operate and maintain the town's facilities, infrastructure, and vehicle fleet. In total, municipal staffing levels will remain the same, inclusive of the plan to hire a part-time clerk in the Department of Veteran Services. Operating budgets in the municipal departments will increase by $888,504 or 3.9 percent. We anticipate that approximately $250,000 of that increase is attributable to the rise in the cost of heating oil. The town is fortunate to be currently locked into a heating oil contract through June 30, 2012, at $2.99 per gallon, which, based on current trends, will most likely rise sharply in fiscal year 2013. Efforts to control health insurance costs remain a priority for all cities and towns in the Commonwealth. We are currently in the process of reviewing design plan options consistent with the municipal health insurance legislation adopted last year. We will examine alternative plans available to the community in an effort to achieve cost savings in this all-too-volatile account. I am recommending a 3.5 percent budget increase of $1,102,330 for the Wilmington Public Schools. The level of funding recommended for fiscal year 2013 will enable the school department to ensure that all legal mandates, including those for special education and English-language learner students, are adequately funded. Adoption of the spending recommendation will ensure sufficient funding for all contractual obligations, and it will allow school officials to maintain current classroom staffing levels. One constant for this school administration has been its commitment to identify and implement cost-effective alternatives relative to its provision of high-quality educational service. Modest personnel changes designed to improve upon the quality of education for all students are planned for fiscal year 2013. In addition to her plan to reallocate current staffing to better meet the needs of our students, Superintendent Benton has proposed, and this budget plan funds, the addition of three primary school positions, including a literacy coach at both the Woben Street and Shawshin Elementary Schools in order to assist teachers with reading instruction, and an educational assistant at the Shawshin School. The budget will also fund a half-time guidance counselor for the middle school and a half-time instructor for the ever-expanding and highly successful Strings Program. The school department continues to champion technology initiatives that improve student learning. This past year saw the town-wide installation of a fully redundant fiber-optic municipal area network, serving school and town sites, that was principally funded by available school department funds and supplemented by water receipts and town operating budgets. The network strengthens the town's ability to communicate and transmit data electronically and enhances the school department's ability to offer a wider range of technology applications for its students and staff. The fiscal year 2013 capital outlay budget includes $90,000 to install a wireless communication network within the Wilmington Middle School. Radio access points will be added to the ceilings throughout the building, which will allow students and faculty to connect to a modern wireless network within the school building. The superintendent of Shawshin Valley Technical High School has recommended an operating budget of $18.1 million for fiscal year 2013, a 6.9 percent increase over the school's fiscal year 2012 proposal. Factoring in the school aid funding formula and the increase in Wilmington students attending the regional school from 257 to 271, Wilmington will experience a 9.5 percent increase in its assessment. The town's fiscal year 2013 budget accommodates the proposed increase in that school's budget. Maintaining and improving municipal services requires an annual investment in the town's infrastructure, facilities, and equipment. The foundation of any successful capital improvement plan rests upon the recognition that resources are often scarce and taxpayers have a limited ability to pay. Department heads are asked each year to identify and prioritize capital needs for inclusion in the operating budget. There is never a shortage of requests. From fiscal year 2010 through fiscal year 2012, the town will have spent or earmarked more than $12 million on capital projects and equipment. In fiscal year 2013, the town's capital outlay plan, exclusive of the high school project, calls for the expenditure of $4.5 million. Available town funds, state funds, and water receipts will fund a myriad of important projects and capital purchases. In the recent past, improvements to school and town buildings have focused on the need to address energy efficiency and to better provide for the comfort and safety of students, staff, visitors, and patrons. This past year, the town expended approximately $500,000 to repair roofs on four municipal and school buildings. The fiscal year 2013 budget proposes to fund $635,000 to repair roofs at the public library, $90,000, at the Wildwood Early Childhood Center, $300,000, and at the West Intermediate School, $245,000. The town continues to undertake energy-related projects in school and town buildings. Notable among them was the recently completed window and door replacement project at the Shawshin Elementary School. Jointly funded by the town and by the Commonwealth through its Massachusetts School Building Authority Green Repair Program, the new weather-tight windows and doors are both energy-efficient and aesthetically pleasing. The benefit of the project was not lost on the delightful students who attend the Shawshin School. I suspect it was at the urging of the principal and with the encouragement of staff that Shawshin students decided to send me thank-you notes. One class wrote that, "In their class, there is a sign that says, 'Books are windows to the world,' so now we have beautiful new windows to Shawshin Avenue." Another class wrote, "Thank you for deciding to change our school class windows. Now we can see all the seasons." A third class, which cleverly began and ended their note with flattering praise for the town manager, pulled no punches when they wrote, "Thank you for keeping us safe. Thank you for having someone fix our windows this summer. They were very mucky, and now we can actually see through them." In an effort to improve the overall appearance of the Shawshin School and complementary to the window project, the budget proposes to fund $78,000 to paint the interior of the building. The Department of Public Buildings is hopeful that it can reinstate and sustain a maintenance program which call for periodic painting of town and school buildings. On January 12th, 2012, Superintendent Benton submitted a statement of interest endorsed by both the Board of Selectmen and school committee to the MSBA as a first step towards receiving funds for a window replacement project at the North Intermediate School. Accordingly, we will ask voters at the annual town meeting to appropriate $800,000 for this project, of which approximately $400,000 will be funded by the MSBA. The town's roadway repair program for fiscal year 2013 is primarily funded by Chapter 90 Construction Funds. The governor has filed a transportation bond bill that earmarks $200 million for the Chapter 90 Local Road and Bridge Program. The proposed level of funding for Wilmington is $772,277, a slight increase over the current year's level. The calendar year 2012 program will include the reconstruction and resurfacing of approximately three miles of roadways throughout the town. Roadway improvements are planned to be undertaken on Chestnut Street from Burlington Avenue to Butters Row, on the entire length of Eames Street, on the streets located in the Freeport Drive neighborhood, on Grove Avenue from Lake Street to east of Burnap Street, and on Lake Street from Shawshin Avenue to South Street. Construction of the first phase of the Lawrence Street Sidewalk Project from Glen Road to Hamlin Lane is scheduled for completion in 2012. The second phase, which will complete the project to Shady Lane Drive, has been designed and permitted, and construction is anticipated to begin in fiscal year 2013. This project is also funded through Chapter 90 Construction Funds. The Department of Public Works concluded an extremely busy year dealing with the difficult weather that included snowfall totaling over 100 inches, wind and flooding damage from Tropical Storm Irene, and severe tree damage from the late October snowstorm. As usual, Public Works crews took on several major in-house projects, including the construction of a new soccer field behind the former Whitfield School, the drainage and construction associated with the first phase of the previously mentioned Lawrence Street Sidewalk Project, and the repair of the Shady Lane Drive culvert. The town has also begun implementation of a road salt reduction plan. This program will be implemented in a carefully phased approach so as not to jeopardize public safety. We are confident that the town's reduced salt operations plan will provide an effective program of de-icing, keeping roadway safe for travel while providing benefits to both the environment and the water supply. Several infrastructure improvement projects will be funded by the Water Department's operating budget in fiscal year 2013, most notable among them being the upgrade of approximately 3,200 feet of underground water main on Church Street. The upgrade will provide an appropriate supply of water for consumption and fire protection, and will be constructed in tandem with a new sewer line that is being installed to support the new high school. Joining the two projects will prove cost-effective for the town and less disruptive to the public. The Church Street Water Main Improvement Project is expected to cost $525,000. The Water Department will also invest $100,000 to continue its practice of replacing undersized water mains throughout the community, $17,000 to increase the productivity of existing well 9B on Salem Street, and it will earmark $40,000 to further fund the work required to install a 10-inch water line under the Federal Street culvert. In order to meet the standards established by the United States Environmental Protection Agency, the Water Department's budget includes $300,000 to convert the town's two water treatment plants from the existing aluminum sulfate chemical feed system to an iron-salt coagulant system. This conversion will result in the removal of the current aluminum concentration from the plant's discharge. The fiscal year 2013 capital plan calls for an upgrade in the town's construction equipment. We are recommending an appropriation of $230,000 to purchase a vacuum street sweeper and $128,000 to purchase a backhoe loader. Both construction vehicles would replace aging equipment that are inefficient to use and that no longer provide reliable services to town operations. Water Department funds will enable the purchase of a mini excavator for $61,000, a skid steer loader, which is commonly referred to as a Bobcat, $48,000, and a heavy-duty pickup truck at $26,600 that will be suitable for snow removal operations. The fiscal year 2013 spending plan will also seek an appropriation of $42,000 to replace the eight garage doors in the main bays of the Department of Public Works headquarters that are original to the building. The town places great emphasis on the importance of maintaining responsive and reliable emergency vehicles. In fiscal year 2010, the town appropriated funds enabling the purchase of a frontline ambulance and a state-of-the-art aerial tower truck. The fiscal year 2012 capital outlay budget included $220,000 for the purchase of a rapid-response vehicle for the fire department, the delivery of which is expected in early spring. The fiscal year 2013 budget proposes the acquisition of a 1,250-gallon-per-minute two-stage pumper. This fire truck would be serviced with a compressed air foam system, the technology of which will enhance the department's capability to rapidly extinguish all types of fires. We anticipate the cost of the pumper to be $630,000. The capital outlay budget proposes the purchase of four new cruisers for the police department at a cost of $36,000 each. The new vehicles would replace the department's most utilized mock cruisers currently assigned to the Patrol Division on a 24-hour, seven-day basis. In keeping with town policy, the replaced cruisers will be reassigned within the department and/or other areas of town government. Since fiscal year 2010, the town has purchased new radios to work toward compliance with the federal government mandate for narrowbanding and digital compliance. Final funding to meet this mandate is included in the fiscal year 2013 capital outlay budget. The purchase of 20 digital portable radios and 12 digital mobile radios at a cost of $68,400 will upgrade the department's radio inventory and enable them to meet the imposed compliance deadline of January 1, 2013. Although I have not outlined the operating plan for each component of town government, residents can be assured that the budget proposal provides each department with the necessary funds to do their job and to do it well. Each manager will review their annual spending plan with the Finance Committee over the next several weeks. I am confident that the committee and the public at large will find innovation and austerity at the core of each department's presentation. It is incumbent upon communities to be prepared for emergencies, unexpected expenditures, shotfalls, and most especially for unforeseen opportunities. Toward that end, the town will again request an appropriation of $125,000 in a miscellaneous facility improvement line item. These funds will enable the town to react quickly and efficiently to unexpected breakdowns in facility plant operations and to take advantage of grant opportunities requiring a funding match. The budget is also buttressed by a $450,000 annual Finance Committee Reserve Account. We have built a substantial operating reserve in support of Water Department operations, and for the fifth consecutive year, we project no increase in water rates. The town has sufficient funds in its property tax overlay accounts and $9,491,810 in its free cash reserve. We have been able to withstand a protracted period of economic decline without compromising our commitment to providing an affordable government free of fees, cutbacks, layoffs, and operational tax overrides. More remarkably, we have accomplished our goals while improving our financial stability. And in case you have not heard, voters by an overwhelming and unprecedented margin approved both the plans and the financing for the construction of a new Wilmington High School. More than 75 percent of the 5,016 residents who cast ballots in the December 6th, 2011 special election voted in favor of a proposition two-and-a-half-dead exclusion. The vote, 3,778 to 1,238, provides the town with temporary additional taxing capacity to enable it to raise funds in excess of its levy limit. The town spoke with a near-singular voice The town spoke with a near-singular voice the following Saturday, December 10, when nearly 98% of special town meeting attendees voted 1,426 to 31 to appropriate $81.5 million to construct a new high school on the same grounds of the current site. I am not really big into music, but while standing in the high school gymnasium, I was reminded of a song whose lyrics include the words "What a Feeling." Congratulations to Chairman Joanne Benton and the members of the High School Building Committee, to the members of the numerous working groups, to school and town officials, to the professional design and project management team, and especially to the residents, all of whom should justifiably take ownership of this most amazing collaborative effort. We are confident that the finished product will exceed expectations and become the 21st century learning facility that our students deserve. While the national economy remains sluggish, the Massachusetts economy has shown recent signs of growth. In Wilmington, that also appears to be true, as evidenced by the opening of restaurants and other retail and service-related business. The housing market, although not flourishing, has also shown recent signs of recovery. Included on this evening's selectman agenda is a letter from the Chief Financial Officer of Analog Devices. Analog is an integral part of the town's local economy, employing approximately 2,000 people at its Wilmington facility. Valued not only for its economic contributions, Analog has long been an example of good corporate citizenship. Ten days ago, I met with officials of the company to discuss their plans for expansion, which may, and I say "may," include the investment of $200 million in a new 250,000-square-foot facility on the Wilmington campus. The Analog officials were especially complimentary of the town and has demonstrated willingness to cooperate with businesses for the ultimate benefit of the community. This is an exciting opportunity for Wilmington, both in terms of job growth and in identifying new sources of tax revenue. Once again, I conclude my remarks with a profound sense of gratitude to the citizens of this community. Citizens who inspire me, whether by criticism or commendation, to work hard on their behalf; citizens who have consistently afforded me the opportunity to present and implement a blueprint for the town and its future. I am especially privileged to have had the opportunity to serve local government in such a special place, a place where so many of Wilmington's residents readily subscribe to the affirmation of George Bernard Shaw, who wrote, "I am of the opinion that my life belongs to the community, and as long as I live, it is my privilege to do for it whatever I can." It is this enduring commitment to community that defines our town and bodes well for its future. Thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Wow. That was, as usual, I look forward to your budget presentation every year, and I think we know as a town that we've been privileged to have you here for 22 years. And that was, the way I think of the town manager in a town like Wilmington and the way it's run is like a foundation, a good pyramid. And you were at the peak of this pyramid, and as you said, the base of this pyramid is solid to so many department heads, so many committees, and many that are here tonight, and I thank you all for being here. And that was an amazing, an amazing budget presentation. And I think it's the first one that I've ever heard you do that actually used the word mucky. So that was, that was very good. Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I'll just, to echo what the chairman stated, you know, I think I've served with the town manager more than any member of the board of selectmen. I know we have agreed and disagreed, but I think at the end of the day, we both care about our community. And I can honestly say, by looking at the town manager, I think he's done a great job in this community as our town manager. We've always taken a strong conservative approach as a member of the board, but he's here day in and day out. We just serve here, you know, on a part-time basis, but you're here every single day. You see, you run the operations, and I hear a lot of good things in the community, owning a local business. I perhaps probably see more people on a given day than any local or state politician. And I've heard very positive things about the town manager and the way the town is being run. Some people are very enthusing, excited about the new high school, trying to give our kids the opportunity to compete with everyone. And it's really nice to see when the town manager mentions, over the past two fiscal years, from 2010 to 2012, we spent $12 million on capital projects and equipment without two-and-a-half override. Too many communities are doing that, not to mention the new police cruisers, or the aerial ladder, or the many things in the school systems, or the Public Works Department. You know, we do a really good job in this town, but it has a lot to do with the town manager. And I just say on a personal note, Mike, I think you've done a good job, and I'm really glad to serve with you, and I would think that it is mutual respect, because your office has always been open to me. In fact, I'm going to see you this week. People don't really see behind the closed doors, but all the members here do come in and see the manager. They work very hard and tire asleep for what we do. We care about the town. I'm only speaking on my behalf, but I know the members here do a good job, and it's been a good civil board. And you've been doing a good job as chairman. And once again, Mike, you're a good family man. We're raising our family, you're raising your grandchildren in this town too, and I know you care. And I just want to say that, and I'm not talking specifics on budgets, but I'm giving the man, tipping my hat to him that he's done a good job. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
I'd just echo much of what has already been said, and certainly we'll have plenty of opportunity over the course of the next year to, you know, to do different things for the last time with the town manager. In terms of the budget, it was a fine presentation, as usual, and every year I say the same thing to people who pay attention. There's always a story that's continuing from one year to the next. There are always goals and strategies that are implemented from, you know, over the course of several years, and I think that this year's budget is again a great example of that, specifically the way you highlight some of the capital improvement projects that we've been implementing for the last several years, and certainly which have your fingerprints on them in terms of planning and prioritizing. And at the end of the day, I think that the, you know, the conservative philosophy that you demonstrate, the planning over several years at a time, and kind of the strategic approach that you bring to management, really is reflective of the people that we represent. And I think that's why you've enjoyed such success and enjoyed successful relationships and collaborative relationships with the School Department, the Superintendent, the Boards of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and so on. So, you know, trying to really limit my comments at this time in terms of the budget. Look forward to reviewing this again and having the opportunity to comment on it further, but certainly another, another fine presentation. Thank you.
Yes, and I do, I don't think people realize the hours that you put in on a weekly basis and the couple months before the budget presentation, the hours that you put in, till all hours of the night, and your staff, I think I see most of them here in the back. So hats off to the hours and the hard work that you and your staff do just to get to this point, which I know was just the beginning. And to quote you, "We are in this together." Thank you. And Judy?
Yes, thank you very much. Certainly many of the comments have already been stated, and looking at this at a very high level, I certainly appreciate all of the effort that you've put into it, as well as the different departments and committees. Obviously, this is a proven document that speaks to collaboration and synergy among many different organizations and departments within the town of Wilmington. As you said in your presentation, there is a limited budget with competing needs, and I feel good about looking at this at a preliminary level, that there is something for everyone, whether you work for the town of Wilmington or you're a resident here. And there's something unique and special about this town, whether you're a newborn all the way up to a senior elderly person. And I appreciate the fact that while you're looking historically to learn from past practice, you have a solid plan for the current state of affairs in the town of Wilmington, and you always have a look to the future and have a vision to see that we're in a secure fiscal environment. Certainly you can look at the state of Massachusetts, you can look at the country as a whole. Certainly, the economy has not been the most stellar story to be speaking about, but I feel that the town of Wilmington has stood tall and stood strong in the face of adversity, and we certainly have accomplished and have taken advantage of, unfortunately, some of the economic downturn. And I certainly tip my hat off to you and to the other people that are here that work day in and day out. Certainly, I'm one of the newer members of the board. We do this on a volunteer, part-time basis, but you and the members that are here tonight do this day in and day out, and it's your effort, it's your dedication, it's your collaboration back at the school level, back, you know, in the, all the different departments, to see that we have a solid budget that the town of Wilmington can feel very proud of and can feel good about in terms of taxes. The fact that everyone that works for the town of Wilmington has a job, the fact that our education continues to go up and to the right, the fact that we are making capital improvements and are breaking ground on a 21st century learning community when other, you know, schools and whatnot are having such financial hardships is just an amazing story to tell, and I'm proud to hold, you know, just one small part of that. Obviously, I've been born and raised in this town, and I know as a child, watching you and your family, and now your grandchildren here, it's very nice to see your family here, to see your wife here. Obviously, I'm sure this is very emotional for you to be giving your last budget presentation, but I can tell you with certainty that you have left this town better than you found it, and I will always be grateful to you for that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Well said. Yeah, you know, Mike, I, I'm not embarrassed at all to admit to you that, and to the town, that I've learned an awful lot from you, and I value that, and these are, the lessons that you've taught me, not only about municipal government, but about life and how to handle oneself in various situations, I'll carry with me for the rest of my days, so I'm indebted to you for that. I'm indebted to you as a resident of Wilmington for the condition that you leave this town in as you prepare to depart. So, my hat is off to you, kudos to you, and my thanks to you for the remarkable job you've done through the years and including in the assemblage of this budget. So, thank you, Mr. Kira. Couple of bullets that jumped out for me were, well, I feel a sense of cautious optimism. I don't know if you feel a similar way, but the fact that the governor is calling for effectively a level-funded budget for the state makes me feel like we are, in fact, sort of pulling our way out of this recession. In the last few years, listening to the governor and certainly from the, from the federal down through the state, every year it's talking about cuts, every year it's talking about minimizing expenditures, not being able to fund certain operational projects, and this year we didn't hear so much about that. We certainly didn't hear, let's open up the checkbooks by any stretch of the imagination, but we heard the message of level funding, and it feels like that's a message we haven't heard in a while. So I feel a little bit bolstered by that, and I do have a sense of caution, cautious optimism, tempered only a little bit about the idea that we're going to have to negotiate a new heating oil contract for next fiscal year. So, I'm sure your successor will not be too pleased to have to go down that road, but thank you for holding us at a very good rate there. And by and large, I feel that many of the practices, the policies that you have established as standard for the way this government operates have put us in the position, and my colleagues have already said this, have put us in the position to be able to do some of the remarkable things that the residents are now able to take advantage of, including the increase of our field space stock by the purchase of the Intel Farm property, putting us in a position to be able to leverage the resources of MSBA for the new high school project, putting us in a position to be able to put in the technology in the middle school so that the middle schoolers will be able to graduate to the high school, and we can reinforce this message of a 21st century education all the way up through the ranks. So, again, thank you for keeping your eye on the ball, keeping us able to do those things when our sister towns around us are doing everything they can just to balance the budget. We're investing for the future. So, thank you, Mr. Kira, thank you to all the departments, and let's let the Finance Committee chew it up.
Thank you.
Thank you. As Mike mentioned, I do see your wife out here and some of your other family members. If you'd like to introduce them, and perhaps the, who else is here, the School Committee, Finance Committee, and maybe entertain some questions?
Thank you. I appreciate the very kind words. It's a bit embarrassing sitting up here, but it's better than the alternative, that's for sure. And I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for all of their support over these many years. We still have things to do, and I'll be here to try to help do them, but when I say help, it is really help, because despite the kind of credit that's coming my way, it's only as a result of the people, and most of them that are sitting in this room. Certainly, you know, we talked about some of the school projects and the school initiatives, and those come from the efforts of the School Superintendent and her staff, and I'm especially appreciative to Joanne, who's here, and the partnership that we've had over these last many years, that I can only hope that my successor is fortunate to be able to also deal with a School Committee that is really willing to walk hand in glove with the town administration, to others that are here, Paul Roggerio, the Director of Finance Administration, Neil Ellis, the Information Systems Manager at the School Department. Their fingerprints are on this budget document, and of course, their own budget along with Joanne, so I thank them for that. I appreciate the support of the School Committee, Chairman Kane, who has worked alongside us for so many years and has been willing to work with the town in terms of her leadership. And I also want to recognize Ginny Barnish, and Bob Hayes, and Maria Marchese, and Kathleen Carroll, all of whom are here. I appreciate their level of support and the fact that they came here today. The members of the Finance Committee, who as Mike Shampoo indicated, will now chew on this and chew on it good, I'm sure, as they always do. They do a remarkable job for the community. They're sort of the unsung heroes in terms of going through all of the minutia. You know, that was fine for me to give an overview, but now you get into the guts of the budget, and this is a committee that does an incredibly good job, you know, led by John Dougherty, and I see Vicky Ellsworth that's here, and Bill Wallace, and Bob Palmer, and all that he's done over these many years as a department head as well, and Dick Hayden is here, and I don't think I'm missing anybody, but those that aren't here are all also very, very active. It's a committee that shows up, which is, I don't want you to think that's remarkable, but the fact is, it's a good committee. It's a committee that comes and rolls up their sleeves and does a very good job. There are some departments here, department heads here, who are representative of what you talked about, Mr. Chairman, very, very hard-working folks who do a great job, and the Finance Committee gets to see that each year when they make their presentation. The residents, I think, experience it every year. Anybody who has been at the senior center, who has worked with Terry Masiallo, the Director of Elderly Services, know that we have certainly a gem in Terry and the work that she's done in terms of upgrading the services that are now part of the Elderly Services Department in terms of outreach has been just phenomenal. I see back there Chief Michael Begonis, who has led his department to both certification and accreditation, one of the few communities in Massachusetts that can boast of that, and he's been a good and strong colleague and somebody that I've always been able to rely on for these many years. I saw, there's Deb, Deborah Cipriani, who runs the best, hands-down, recreation department, I think, in Massachusetts. I don't know every one of them, but I can't imagine one being better or more efficiently run that runs with so little appropriation and that is able to, year in and year out, turn out such a wonderful product. And people don't realize it, but some of those things that you see, like if you go to the Shawshene School and you enjoy the pavilion, as so many people comment on, that's from recreation funds that have been raised from the many, many programs that Debbie runs, and her fingerprints are on so many things around town, and we certainly appreciate her wonderful work. The financial folks that are in the back, Pamela McKenzie, treasurer collector, you know, an example of somebody who has been working in Wilmington really almost her entire professional career, where she started at the, at the professional career, where she started at the, at the, we don't even have this lowest position anymore. It was so low, it was before I got here. And she now has risen to become the Treasurer Collector, and she's done a remarkable job, and she got that appointment because she is so very efficient and so very good at what she does, so appreciate all of her work. And Mike Morris in the back, a partner in this budget process, who as the Town Accountant is also a fellow who has been here, who was here before I was here, and he's, he's still going to stick it out for several more years, I'm, I'm sure. He's one of the most knowledgeable fellows that I've ever met in terms of municipal finance, and does a remarkable job in dealing with so many of the complicated issues that confront us through the Department of Revenue and all of the different regulations that we have to deal with, so I, my hats are off, hat is off to him. My own staff who is here, Paula Barry and Wendy Martinello, you know, a lot of burden has been placed on them because we've cut back. We used to have two other, two more people in the, in the manager's office than what we have now. The burden has fallen on them, and they've done a remarkable job, and just a tremendous amount of work that comes out of those two folks, particularly as we go through the budget process. A lot of the real difficult tedious work in reviewing all of the ancillary budget books that have to be looked at, and I know I appreciate very much their work. And now Wendy has the good fortune to have to go to finance committee meetings for the next several weeks. And finally, two folks who, the right and the left hand, who I think are just spectacular in terms of the way they work, my, my own administrative assistant, Beverly Dalton. Tomorrow's her birthday, happy birthday for tomorrow. It worked out this year since she didn't have to spend her birthday here at the budget meeting, but nevertheless, she is, when you get an email from me at 9:30 at night, that means Beverly's still here. So, you know, she is somebody who has a remarkable work ethic and a sense of productive ownership over what goes out of this office, and it's been just a joy to work with her, and the kind of work that she has done over the years for the town is truly laudatory. And finally, Jeff Hull, who I hope will be here for a long time after, after I have a happy retirement, and he is, he is just incredibly able and hardworking, another person that is, puts in enormous hours here at the town hall. He's, he and I are not exactly the same because he gets up at 4:30 in the morning and runs for a couple of miles. If I get up, it's not to run. And then he comes into the office, he pretty much opens the place, and then he often closes the place, and he's just been somebody who we can all rely on. Every department head relies on the work that Jeff does because he is so bloody efficient, and his, his work is very, very thorough and very comprehensive. And I know that the, anything that we've had over the last 22 years would not have been as successful or as productive if, if Jeff wasn't a part of it, so my, my hat's off to a remarkable, talented municipal professional. You mentioned my family, I appreciate that. My wife Jane is, is here, maybe as we go down the road a bit, as you say, Mike, I'll have an opportunity to talk about her sacrifices and all that she's done for the town. She's, actually, she's much better known than I am. We walk in the market basket every once in a while, or at church, there are all these little kids, because she works over at the Wildwood Early Childhood Center that are kind of looking out and pointing out to who Mrs. Kyra is, and I appreciate what she means. My, my son is back there, Mike, Brian. I call him, everybody does that, right? Everybody calls their kids, you know, I call Jennifer Angel and Angel Jennifer, and Michael Brian and Brian Michael, and it's just the way it goes, and I think it's probably because the family is so close, and so I appreciate Brian dropping by after his basketball practice that he's coaching. And so, that's, that's it. Thank you very much. Again, it's a, it's a real collaboration, and I know one, especially the residents, should not get the feeling that any of this stuff is done without the full support of a very large team. And I think the result for Wilmington has been good, and it's, it's due to the leadership that we have on the, on the town boards, and it's due to the community spirit that we have from the residents. I think that more than anything probably exemplifies what the town is about. So, unless there are any other questions?
And if one had to take questions from Superintendent Ben, you can sit.
Good evening. I regretted if I didn't make a few comments on, on your last budget statement, Town Manager. First of all, I want to thank all the department heads from the town side who have truly worked collaboratively with the school side to make the successful schools that we have. I've worked in three other districts, and you've heard me say it before, I've never had the cooperation, collaboration, and respect, mutual respect, that I've had in the town of Wilmington, and I truly thank the leader for all that you've done to bring that to the mission. I struggled with what I wanted to say this evening, so I'm, I hope you'll bear with me because I just want to read something short. The Theodore Roosevelt wrote in 1910 when he gave a speech entitled "Citizenship in a Republic," because I truly believe this passage exemplifies all that the town manager has been to me to quote. It's not, not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or we have the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who airs, who comes shot again and again because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, but he does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasm, great devotion, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement. Thank you, Town Manager, for lavishing all your gifts on Wilmington Public Schools and on the town. I will certainly miss our budget talks and discussions, and I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one thing, one last to manage of something. He said in his budget that last year was a tough year, we had 100 inches of snow, I'm sure we depleted that budget. Now, as Chief Fiscal Officer, this year we've had inches. What are we going to do with the money we don't spend?
Pay the town manager one more year?
Can I get back to you on that? Just want to mention that the budget is on, will be online at some point tomorrow, definitely by Wednesday, it'll be up on, on the town's website, and we also will have copies at certainly at town hall and at the, at the public library. And that's it. Well, thank you. And there are, I think there are copies of the message if anybody is interested. We can, maybe Beverly, we could just put it on the, on one of the chairs here if people are interested in that, in that. Thank you.
Nice to see so many people at a meeting too as well. You don't have to leave if you don't want to. Communications.
We have correspondent from Congressman Nikki Songus that was sent to the Secretary of Transportation, Ray LaHood regarding the I-93 Tri-Town Interchange Project, and she was writing to the secretary to apprise him of recent developments on the project since his visit in 2010. She indicates that she met recently with the Lieutenant Governor to express her desire to work with the state to identify opportunities with the federal government as we go forward on this project. And she was, coming from her, now she indicates that she was pleased with the receptiveness that she received from the Lieutenant Governor. She has provided a project update presentation from the Department of Transportation, which essentially is what we've seen in the past, but more importantly, what she is trying to do is to jumpstart this project because it has not had a lot of activity over the last several months. So, she is writing to the secretary with the hope that he can identify suitable funding and project support at the federal level, and she's talking again to the governor and the Lieutenant Governor about proper support at the state level. So, we now, I guess at a point we will be waiting for Secretary LaHood's response to Congresswoman Songus, so I'm sure will let us know what that is. There had, there is an indication in the letter that there was to be a meeting that she hoped to have with the various communities by the end of July. Obviously, that did not take place, but I'm sure that they're working on rescheduling something or scheduling something. I referenced earlier in my budget message the conversations that we've had with Analog. I actually met with some of the local leadership at Analog, as I indicated, about 10 days ago, and got the follow-up letter from David Zinsner, who was Vice President of Finance and the Chief Financial Officer, relative to advising us of his intent to apply for the Massachusetts Economic Development Program, and he then reiterated what his company is looking at. They are in the process of making a decision as to whether or not to make their investment of this technological and manufacturing operation in Ireland or in Wilmington. So, it's come down at this point to those two locations, and we're obviously encouraging them to look in this direction, and I did want to bring this to the attention of the Board of Selectmen as it has just taken place, and I will formally write them unless there's objection, just to indicate that we would be interested in, in working with them. We've already indicated that obviously, but I wanted to be able to not put something in writing until after I spoke with the board and, and was able to indicate the board's support to, to working with them. Now, what that ultimately entails is, is not exactly clear at this point. The only discussion that I've had so far has been to learn about what the, what their plans would be if their corporation decides to go in this direction, and I'll keep you apprised as things go forward. Thank you.
Is that, is that the same program that Textron? Is that a different one? I just couldn't remember about that.
Yeah, Textron was the Federal Recovery Loan Program, and this is, this is different, and I would, I would suspect that ultimately they would be looking at any kinds of property tax incentives, and that's something we'd have to look at and come back to the Board of Selectmen if that were going to be the case.
You mentioned to me the word incentives, and I was going to ask you that question or see what appetite the board would have, and I suppose, maybe it's premature to start talking about specific incentives, but, you know, this, if they were to build this facility in Wilmington, obviously it represents jobs, revenue, and potential quality of life for residents, and, you know, I just think it's, it's a boon for everybody. Everybody wins in that regard. They didn't put the tenor of their sentence where they allude to the fact that the government of Ireland had recently funded and is strongly interested in having them go there. It wasn't, I didn't take it as a threat, but it was certainly a warning. So, I kind of feel like, does it make sense for us? I'm personally very much in favor of the town of Wilmington and this board sending a letter of, an enthusiastic letter, hoping that they will strongly consider Wilmington as the location. Would it behoove us to ask state and federal legislative representatives to also, I mean, if we're competing against a foreign country, we're not, we're not trying to get it to, in Wilmington versus Norwood, we're trying to get in United States versus Ireland first, and then let's get it in Wilmington too. So, do we want to get Representative Tierney involved? Do we want to get Senator Brown perhaps to write a letter? And frankly, do we want to reach out to local chambers of commerce and have them articulate some interest? I don't, I don't know how far stretching to put this.
I think it, it's something that we should think about. I think we need to have probably a little more information. We, I've had no, when they met with us, and we met for about an hour, there was no discussion of any tax incentive. I'm reading between the lines a little bit and talking with the Massachusetts Office of Business Development, who have committed on behalf of the state to provide them with whatever they can provide them. One of those things obviously is they cannot provide them any property tax relief. So, I think they have all of that support, but let me, let me meet with the folks from the state and perhaps even bring them in if the board would like to a selectmen's meeting to have a presentation as to what it would entail. And I think at this point, we need to, we need to meet more with, with Analog, and I had indicated to Mr. Zinsner that after the meeting I would be back in touch with him, and certain, I think your suggestions are, are good ones, I think it's a question of timing at this point. Yes, we, we have correspondents from Massachusetts Municipal Association regarding the statewide spring legislative breakfast meetings that many of you and I and others, Jeff and others have attended in the, in the past, they're good opportunities to have a discussion with the, both with the MMA staff, but especially the legislators that, that attend, and particularly now since they will be going through the, the machinations of the whole budget process. The meetings are in February 17th, 24th, and 2nd. Unfortunately, the closest meeting to us on March 2nd is Ipswich. Not that that's a, you know, a long way away, but it's a far cry from North Reading, which is where it's been for the last few years. So, if anybody's interested in attending, they can either sign up directly or let Beverly know, and we'll make sure you get on the registered. Provided information on the 2012 Annual Town Meeting and Fiscal Year 2013 Budget Calendar. These are the dates that the public presentation kicked off, obviously with, with tonight's meeting, but they're, the budget process itself has already been going on for several months, as has been mentioned. The key dates are the Finance Committee meeting dates. The first one will be Thursday, February 2nd. All of those meetings are held in this room, they begin at 7:00 PM. They're all posted, they're all on the, on the town's website, but just in case people are interested, they're typically Tuesdays or Thursdays. They go from February 2nd to March 1st. On February 2nd, we will meet to do an overview of the budget and to discuss some of the administrative accounts as well as the revenue projections, and then we meet again on the 7th with several of the offices, Planning Conservation, Town Clerk, Building Inspector, Board of Appeals, and Board of Health. On the 9th, we meet with the Recreation Department, Public Library, and Elderly Services. On the 14th, we meet with Veteran Services, the Historical Commission, and Public Buildings. On the 21st, with the Department of Public Works and the Water and Sewer Division. On the 28th, with the various Public Safety Departments, Police, Fire, Public Safety, Dispatch, Animal Control. And on March 1st, is a meeting with the School Department, the Wilmington School Department, and the Shawshin Tech. The other important dates that I would just highlight would be February 3rd, which is the last day for the submission of petitioned warrant articles, and then March 20th, which is the Finance Committee and Planning Board public hearing, and all leading up, of course, to the town's election on the 28th of April and the May 5th town meeting. This information again is all available. If people don't have access to the web, they can certainly contact my office. Mr. Chairman, the board is being asked to consider signing a conservation restriction for a portion of Parcel 14B on Assessors Map 86, which is property at 326 Woben Street. You have a copy of a letter that was sent to you from Mrs. Hamilton, the Director of Planning Conservation, who indicated- Planning and Conservation, who indicated that as a condition of construction of the single-family dwelling on the lot, the Conservation Commission required the developer to create a conservation restriction on a portion of the property to protect the wetlands on the majority of this particular parcel in perpetuity. The entire lot is almost 86,000 square feet. With this restriction, you would be protecting nearly 48,000 square feet. The Conservation Commission, at its meeting on January 4th, voted to accept the restriction, and the Conservation Commission is requesting that the board vote to accept the restriction as well. It would preserve the land. It's not a donation. We would not own the land, but it is a legal restriction on what could be done on the land, so it has a similar effect without the town having to be owner. So I would recommend the board consider signing the conservation restriction.
Any questions, comments, or motions?
I move to sign the conservation restriction as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor? Unanimous.
There are three documents that need to be signed at the top pages, please. Thank you. The board is being asked to consider signing the warrant for the presidential primary election to be held on March 6th, 2012. The votes would be cast in the presidential primary for candidates of political parties for the following offices: presidential preference, State Committee men, State Committee women, Town Committee, and that would be it. The election is from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Tuesday, the 6th of March. Just as an FYI, residents who, whose precincts or locations are being changed have been notified by mail, so if you were not a recipient of such a letter, that means that your precinct and voting, polling location is in the same place, but consistent with what was voted on several months ago and adopted by the legislature. We are now into the new voting districts. The polling locations are all the same, but certain folks will be voting either somewhere else or in a different precinct at that same location. Anybody has questions about that should contact the Town Clerk's office. Mr. Chairman, we would need a vote to consider signing the warrant.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or a motion?
Move to approve and sign the, is it a warrant?
Yes, the presidential primary warrant.
Presidential primary warrant for Tuesday, the 6th day of March, 2012, and open the polls from 7:00 to 8:00, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, per your direction, we entered into a memorandum of agreement with the Police Patrolmen's Union, anti-PBA Local Number 1, and as such, we revise the collective bargaining agreement for the period July 1, 2010, through June 30, 2013, which had already been in effect. And what this does essentially is it resolves the dispute between the town and the Patrolmen's Union relative to the Quinn incentive program. It continues the Quinn incentive program, and it makes the following concessions. We made concessions to the four-and-two worksheet, which reduces the amount of days that those offices who are working a four-and-two shift are entitled to from 17 to 15 days, and it also gives the police chief very specific, I don't want to say direction, but specific parameters in terms of how the offices may use their day. It strengthens the police chief's discretion. We, as I indicated, this was an exchange for the Quinn bill program. We've also deleted certain language in the documents, but more specifically, we've deleted the early retirement incentive that was formally available to the patrolmen. They now no longer have the early retirement. We also structured vacation so that there would not be indefinite carryover of vacation and put a limit on what could be used. We reduced their sick days from 15 days a year to 12 days a year, and also reduced proportionately other programs within the entire sick day program that they have. We eliminated in its entirety any pay for jury-paying court leave in terms of standby activity. We reduced the compensation on their uniform and protective clothing allowance, and we further decided to come up with a one-year extension and a new, which would, in fact, become a new contract. In addition, we also froze the maximum amount of sick time that could be accumulated to 165 days. The new contract, and I'll just, we'll vote on them separately if that's okay, but since I'm talking about it, the new contract would provide in fiscal year 2014, a 1% increase on January 1. So it's effectively a half percent increase in salary for the January, for the 2014 fiscal year. The board, obviously, has been very much a part of the negotiations, and negotiations have dealt with an executive session, and so the board is obviously not telling the board of selectmen anything that they don't already know, but in terms of public disclosure and transparency, that's the agreement that's on the table. The union has, obviously, as you know, agreed and has willingly signed the documents, and now I would ask that the board consider a vote to first execute the revised collective bargaining agreement between the town of Wilmington and the New England Police Benevolent Association Local 1 for the period July 1, 2010, through June 30, 2013.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to execute the revised collective bargain agreement between the town of Wilmington and the New England Police Benevolent Association Local 1, Patrolmen's Union, for the period of July 1, 2010, through June 30, 2013.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor? Unanimous.
There again, in this case, there are five contracts to be signed by, under the selectmen's.
Okay. While we're doing that, we're going to entertain a motion to execute the collective bargaining agreement from July 1, 2013, through June 30, 2014.
Move to execute the collective bargaining agreement between the town of Wilmington and the New England Police Benevolent Association Local 1, Patrolmen's Union, for the period July 1, 2013, through July 30, 2014.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor? It's unanimous. That was also a process, a very, very long process, but I think it worked up both for the union and for the town, and another process that the town manager and his staff spent many hours with the union representatives, so again, we appreciate all the work on that. Thank you.
If I could just add to that, Mr. Chairman, we don't typically, you know, make big speeches about bargaining agreements, and I think that historically, at least whenever I've been involved, I think as a matter of course, both the union and the town wisely negotiate contracts in a professional manner that really doesn't try and involve the press or anything else during negotiations, and I think that makes a lot of sense. And the reason why I make the point with respect to these contracts is I think it's a great example of how sometimes issues that are important to the town and to the board and to the management to protect the interests of the town, and likewise, interests that need to be, that the union membership needs to protect themselves and their families, lots of times, the difficult issues aren't brought on by either party to the contract. And I think in this case, the economic climate is always a consideration, but I just think that this particular agreement is an example of how the town did its job and, at the end, you know, came to an agreement, and I think that speaks not only to the work that the town did, but to the way that the union does business as well. So I just thought that was worth mentioning in that we don't usually comment on these things.
Well said. Any other comments down there?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Just for the record, I would note that the two principal negotiators happen to be in, aside from myself, happen to be in this room in the back, Jeff Hall and Chief Agonis, so they both certainly did a remarkable job in bringing the group together.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the regular business before the board.
Okay. Any public comments? Yes, sir.
Michael Baker. We're in Wilmington about 10 years. I wanted to talk about the High School Project real briefly. I was working with a couple of the selectmen sitting up here. As you know, I'm a Local 103, IBW union electrician. We have 73 members in our local, just electricians that live in Wilmington, as of right now, 39 of whom have been unemployed for more than three years. I was lucky enough, I went back to school, actually worked as a paramedic up in Lowell for Trinity, however, I still am a dues-paying member in the local, and this is really twofold. We understand Gilbane is the general contractor, and whether it's the final sub bid group or they, we're able to pick their subs. We're definitely looking for residency. There's plumbers, electricians, I know a couple of the board members have been approached by trade members themselves, or, you know, spouses or children of a lot of laid-off iron workers, pipe fitters, plumbers. Collectively speaking, right now, just for the greater Boston building trades, there's close to 200 taxpayers here in the town of Wilmington that have been out of work over two years. Unfortunately, some of those people are on food stamps, welfare, fuel assistance, and it's a prevailing wage job. It's not like it's going to cost the taxpayers any more money because of its prevailing wage, and we're hoping that the board could look into, right off the bat, doing a residency requirement. Boston, Medford, Lynn, Everett, in the past, I will, Boston, much longer than five years, have done residency. We understand there's been an issue with the record with it, but there's boilerplate language that could get put in as the subs are chosen or the bids go out for the, for the new high school. And I just like it on the record, you know, respect for request of the board of selectmen here to look into the feasibility and sooner than later get a residence requirement put in with this. And then with the greater Boston building trades, they can more than honor that, as I just explained, you know, between the cop and this electrician's, iron workers, pipe fitters, so on and so forth. And I myself, personally speaking, I have a child that's a freshman in high school, another one in the fifth grade. I know if I ended up in that job, you know, there's the inspector coming in inspecting the job, there's a lot he doesn't see, and I think any, especially taxpayer, parent of any students in the school system, plus a former school committee member myself, you know, would be putting that extra effort in as residents and taxpayers in the town. And, you know, we saw it up in Tuxbury, they were using a lot of out-of-town contractors and a lot of out-of-state coming over from New Hampshire, and, you know, it's too bad people up there are unemployed and stuff, but the thing is, when they're coming from out-of-state especially, they're making the paycheck in Tuxbury, and all that money's going up and being spent in New Hampshire. It's not being spent, you know, the local restaurant and the local barber shop. It's, and it's a real, you know, the school's getting built, and, you know, those people that, especially if they live here, are going to turn around and spend that money, you know, right here in the town of Wilmington. And the other big thing is with the health care, I mean, you were just talking about negotiations with your police union. We know health care costs is out of control and it's taxpayers. We pick up the burden for like the network health and Romney care, so to speak. The unions have bona fide, certified health plans, whereas if you want the non-union route, a lot of them, what happens is the whole prevailing wage goes in their paycheck, like the electricians would be getting $70 an hour in their paycheck, and then they're turning around, and we'll just, we'll just start with saying they don't have a decent health plan with the non-union contractors, whereas every greater Boston building trade, any trade, you know, from the painters and the electricians to the iron workers, we have bona fide health plans, and part of that money goes into pension, annuity, and health care, and, you know, instead of the money, instead of the money going to the guy and becoming a burden on the taxpayers because their open shops don't have a, you know, bona fide, certified health plan. Ours do, and our members are a burden, you know, the health care system, so to speak. Just a lot of win-win-win across the board, and right off the bat, you know, in closing, it'd be key to try to get a residence requirement and with this new high school coming out of the ground. And if anyone had any, you know, questions for me at this time, be happy to answer them. If not, you know, my number's in the book, so to speak.
Very good. Thank you. I think you made some good points. Do you want to speak on that?
Certainly, I'll bring it back to the committee.
Okay. All right. Thank you. What was your name again, sir? Michael Baker, A. Felling Road.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? New business committee reports.
That was good. Thank you.
I just can't help but making an additional comment on the budget. I think rightfully so, we were all focused on, you know, in large part, Mr. Kyra and his plans and his history and all that, but I really want to take a moment to say how glad I am to see in the budget the Enthel Farm acquisition. I'm glad that it was highlighted in the budget, something that I know I feel strongly about. I think the board shares it. Very excited about that, and of course, the continued investments we make as a town in education. So I didn't want the meeting to close without making that point. Thank you.
Very good. So, Colin?
I don't have anything additional to add. Certainly, the points have already been made. Excellent budget presentation. I'm thrilled with the fact that we were able to come to terms with the police department with this contract. Certainly, it speaks to the commitment that the town has, as well as the police department is serving the town of Wilmington, and I'm certainly looking forward to this year and what the future holds. So thank you.
Yeah, right on. Yeah, and to Mr. Newhouse's point, we don't often get engaged in specific line item discussions on contract negotiations with our local unions, but this issue has, or this contract negotiation maybe has been a little bit unique, and it's been impassioned, and it has involved issues that are dear, so dear to so many folks. So I, too, wanted to compliment the administration, Mike and Jeff and others, and chief, for your leadership on this issue, and also the union leadership as well for keeping an open mind and recognizing the need to find common ground and collaborate, and I think we heard that message over and over tonight, the word collaboration and teamwork. No one side is all winner or all loser. I think we all have to try to find ways to win together, and I think we did that tonight with our officers. So kudos to everyone on that. I wanted to just briefly mention that last weekend was the Massachusetts Municipal Association Annual Conference in Boston. I was in attendance Friday and Saturday, as I know Chairman Semaglia was, as well as Assistant Town Manager Jeff Hall and Mr. Kyra. It was a jam-packed session. I won't go into details now, but at some point, perhaps, I'll summarize my observations and thoughts and make them available to the board and to the community. But suffice it to say, there's a lot of information being made available by the MMA to municipalities and to local government leaders throughout the Commonwealth, and I tried to avail myself of as much of it as I could over the course of 48 hours, and I hope that, I know that I benefited from it, and I hope the town will benefit from my presence there as well. But interesting stuff, and that was it. I'll share more with you as time permits. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well said. What dates?
Just a brief review of what we've mentioned. Finance Committee begins February 2nd, Thursday, in this room with a total budget overview and a discussion of revenue and all the general government departments, including statutory charges and insurance, miscellaneous expenditures, et cetera. February 3rd is the last day to submit warrant articles for inclusion of the warrant for the annual town meeting. February 7th is a Finance Committee meeting at 7:00 PM. February 9th, a Finance Committee meeting also at 7:00 PM, and then the board next meets on February 13th.
Very good. Thank you, and again, thank you for all the work you've done with this budget and the Finance Committee for all the work they do, and they meet numerous times over the past month and the next month coming up. They don't take holidays, including February 14th, I believe, they're meeting as well. So they- So they really work hard, even on holidays.
Even on holidays.
Thank you. Entertaining motion was there?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.